Good evening Cumberland and welcome to the Town Council meeting of August 10. The first item of business is I'm going to call to order. Second is I'm going to approve of the minutes of July 20th, July 27th, 2020. Do we have a motion? Ron? Second by Bob. All in favor? Unanimous Brenda. The next item is the manager's report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One major item I have before you tonight is a request to break the town garage project into two phases. And tonight, I'm looking to give you an overview of the bond so far. Up on the screen, I have the breakdown so far of the $7 million bond. And that breakdown shows a town garage price at 3.7 million. That will only be basically the garage itself. And I'm just bringing it up on the screen now. This is the, the end of the building is the wash bay that we have talked about. And then these three bays are all new. All three are mechanic's bays. Two of them are drive-through. One is, this is the public works. These two are the school departments. I met with Superintendent Jeff Porter this afternoon and Business Manager Scott Poole and as well as the Assistant Town Manager Chris Baldock to discuss this project. We are at a place where when we originally projected the bond, we had about, let me just show you here, we had tip funds and property acquisition reserves as kind of our safety net of about a half a million dollars. The administrative building by itself, we came in at about $880,000. And to me, at this point in time, if we cannot dip into our reserve accounts, I would like to hold off on that for at least a couple of years until we get a clearer picture on where the economy is heading and when we would be better positioned to do this. The garage project itself is going to take over 10 months to build. That'll give us, let's just call it a year, and then we can plan out another year. There's nothing to say that we as a community couldn't subcontract and build that administrative building by ourselves if we chose to. We have a set of architecture plans already. We can work with our architecture, our architect on that and subcontracted out ourselves within the community. It just seems this, this administrative building has come in at a much higher price than we had hoped for. And it just did not seem wise to dip into reserve funds if we can help it to fund this. As you are all aware, when we went out to bond, we came back with a 1.85% interest rate on a 20-year bond, which is exceptional. And that just basically shows basically the investors, the strength of our, our, our financial position here in Cumberland. That bond came back with a $700,000 premium. And the premium is basically used to kind of reward us for our good financial work, but also to lure investors into working with us on these bonds. Normally, in past bonds, we have kept that and used it to fund bond, future bond payment reserves or other parts of a project. This time, we chose to take those and reduce the bond itself. We reduced it from the $7 million bond that we owed on to a $6.3 million bond. And I think that was the right thing to do, and I would still today say that was the right thing to do. So, we have to use our own money if we want to go any further. And for me, I don't think that's the best way to go. So, tonight, what I'm asking with your permission, Mr. Chair, is that we add an additional agenda item to tonight's meeting agenda as recommended by the Finance Committee. I think everybody on the Finance Committee was in agreement of this. And that we move to authorize the manager, working with the Finance Committee, to execute contracts with Ledgewood for the guaranteed maximum price not to exceed 3.7 million, not 3.75, 3.7 million. And split the town garage project into two phases. Phase one being the maintenance garage and phase two being the administrative building, which we'll revisit in two or three years when economic times are a little bit more stable hopefully. So, that, that concludes my report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have or the council has at this time.
Any questions from the council?
Tom, are you looking to have a motion now or introduce this as a separate item?
Let's do it now.
I would make a motion then to, I move to authorize the town manager to work with the Finance Committee to execute contracts with Ledgewood Incorporated for a guaranteed maximum price not to exceed $3.7 million and to split it into two phases, the town garage project. Phase one will be the garage bays and we'll move forward on this project as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Shirley?
I think I need to move that we discussed this before.
We added the agenda.
I move to add an additional item to the August 10th meeting agenda as recommended by the Finance Committee.
That makes sense.
And then Bob's motion, because we don't have it on the agenda yet.
Okay. Second by Ron. All in favor? Unanimous Brenda.
Then I'll second Bob's motion.
Okay, good. Now we got that all straightened out, Bob.
Okay.
You got it?
Yes, yes, I think so.
All right. Now we need to vote.
Now we need to vote on that, right?
Okay. So, all in favor of the motion? Unanimous Brenda. I hope everybody followed that.
It was a little difficult, but...
Public discussion. Anybody in the public would like to come up? If it's not, if it's not on the agenda for tonight, please do. Not seeing any of that, so thank you. So, the first item is 20-0251, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 84, fees and fines of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the ordinance committee. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, at our last meeting, your last meeting, we went over this in great detail. We are looking for your direction on this. These fees have not been adjusted in 15 years. What we have tried to do is put fees that are close to where our neighbors are and that we, in the future, basically not go any more than five years before we come back to you with a request for adjustment. That, I think, came out of the last meeting as well. We have not had any feedback on the direction you'd like to go, so tonight, Bill Longley, our code enforcement officer is here if you have any questions. If not, if you could give us direction on what you'd like to do, that would be helpful and we're ready to move forward if you are.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anybody from the public want to bring anything up? Not seeing anybody. I'd like to bring it back to the council for discussion and recommendation. Shirley?
I think it's a great idea. I think the timing's wrong.
Other comments?
So, just so I'm clear, so this is what we looked at last week, right? There's no changes, okay. So, right, I asked you and you very kindly did the new construction for me. So then I was looking at relative to the fact that actually more of our construction and permitting is more around additions, right? That we're not actually having as much new construction. And so, looking at it from that perspective, you know, I guess, I mean, I, I hear you, Shirley, like it just seems like, is this really the right time? But, I mean, we haven't looked at these in 15 years. I mean, I, and I guess in my head too, I'm like, well, if someone's doing an addition, I don't know. I just, I feel like relative to kind of the cost of permitting and covering these costs, I just, I don't know that we just sit by again, you know? We just eat the can down the road and I know percentages look high. The dollar value is, it's always hard when you're dealing with smaller numbers, so...
I think my perspective, Allison, is just this, the broader one. We're looking at an entire industry here that's, that's beginning to show signs of You know, from the price of a two-by-four to larger companies, those big jobs that, like, let's say the town doesn't have our railroad crossings to do. So those jobs are now starting to filter down into, and maybe the timing's not bad, but the smaller people doing smaller jobs are getting sort of nudged aside by bigger companies looking to keep their employees working. So, that's just my perspective.
Other comments from the councilors?
I, I favor moving ahead with this. It's, it's been a long time coming and it's, it's, we can always make the argument, not a good time, not a good time. The cost of the fees here are, they're not onerous. It's, it's in keeping with the towns and communities around us. Someone who's considering building a new house or putting an addition on is not going to be, they're not going to be swayed by the cost of a little bit more in fees. So, I, I move ahead with it.
Ron?
I've looked this over. Everybody knows I'm in the midst of putting a mudroom and a garage on my house. And I really was shocked when I went and got my building permit. I thought it would be a lot more than it was because I fell under the old rules. But even under the new rules, it's only a few dollars. I mean, the average house in the town of Cumberland is $411,000 now. So I think we're getting in line with all our neighbors. I mean, and, and don't get me wrong, I don't want to jack the prices up on anything, but I think it's, it's been 15 years coming. I mean, Bob, if anybody knows, you should know. I mean, you, that's what you do for a living, so, but I mean, I do think that our neighbors around us are higher than we are, so...
George?
Yeah, I'm basically in favor of this. The 15 years is a long time not to have these fees change at all. And the fact is that we need to keep the town running based on what we can offset the, the work of the code enforcement officer and others. I just would say that I have more heartburn with impact fees than I do with just basic And the concept of them, but I'm, I'm in favor of more pushing this along.
For the record, I'm in favor of it as well. Shirley?
I just had one more thing to say. It was an idea of my brothers, who, both of my brothers, as you know, work in this industry, so that's where I get my perspective. But my youngest brother called me and said, could we tie this somehow to aging in place where the fees are not so high for someone who might want to add an apartment for caretaker, you know, or something like that? I thought it was an interesting idea. You know, Tom, if you wanted to move a nurse into your house for 24-hour nursing care, you know, would you pay the same fee as someone just looking to up some revenue in their, their home? I thought it was an interesting idea. I'm not going to say this should slow down our motion to vote on this, but...
Any other comments?
I guess my question is though, the, the comment about the five years. So I do, right, then we're not in this spot. And I think actually, you know, maybe it's not even five years, right? Can we look at that? It's an interesting idea. So how do, you know, if that's something we want to make sure is happening and as we look at our fees, do we have to put that in writing somewhere as part of this?
No, I think staff will bring that back to you and we'll basically pencil it in all our calendars to revisit this every five years. So, similar to what we do with impact fees and growth ordinance.
Okay.
I had a nurse visit my mother-in-law, who now is living with us. Come to the house today. And that's a good point that you just brought up, Shirley, but I'm going to, I'm going to still go along with the motion. So do we have a motion? Ron?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend Chapter 84, fees and fines of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? You have that Brenda? Six to one. Or five to one, excuse me. And by the way, Mike Eze is not here tonight. He's on vacation and I failed to mention that when we opened up tonight. Next item is to hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 9, alarms of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the ordinance committee. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At your last meeting, the Chief of Police was here and he went through the alarm ordinance, expressed his concern about eliminating the ordinance. He would like to keep the ordinance. The fee collection, however, as a compromise, I think the ordinance committee and the Chief agreed that that would be a nice compromise to eliminate the fees. I think with the types of alarm systems today, the more Bluetooth, online, all kinds of technology that's really working toward reducing costs, it seemed like those who were being honest and coming forward with their registrations were unfairly penalized. So, in your last motion, in the fees and fines, with hopes that you're going to pass this, we suspended the alarm fees, so those are gone. Those went away with your last motion. We adjusted those at the same time. And tonight, we're looking to adopt the new alarm ordinance, which would suspend the collection of fees or permits as part of this ordinance. Tom?
George?
I know the Chief expressed concern about the fact that people don't register and registering gives the police a much better perspective and ability to respond and so on. I had thought that we came up with a minimum fee just because, or we came up with some mechanism where people putting alarms, even the alarms that you can get off the internet, to encourage them to register. We didn't do anything to do that?
No, we suspended entirely the fees primarily because we talked about like the doorbells. You could buy the doorbells at Home Depot, plug it in and you're up and running. And, you know, our police department has, have used those doorbell cameras for, you know, solving cases just recently in town. So, it would be nice to have them registered so when we get an alarm or we can call somebody and say, hey, we got a photo in your neighborhood, is this your alarm, blah, blah, blah? Are you home? That type of thing. It does help us, basically help the residents, so we're not responding, especially if it's a false alarm. So, we suspended, the only thing we left in there, George, were the penalties for the, you know, second, third, fourth, fifth attempt.
Right. And that's what I was getting at.
We left the fines in there, not the fees. The fines stayed, but not the fees.
Okay. That's where I...
Thank you.
My memory is not serving me right.
No, it served you well on that one, so...
Any other discussion?
Nope. I saw they corrected, so it put back in other than motor vehicle or vessels, so we're good there.
No other discussion? Can I have a motion, please? Bob?
I move to adopt standards to develop, nope, sorry. I move to adopt Chapter 9, alarms of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the audits committee.
Do we have a second? George, second?
A second.
I think we got a second already, Shirley.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous Brenda. Next item is 20-0254, to hear a report of the town manager for the discontinuation of, of, of portion of Turkey Lane from Range Road to the snowmobile bridge. Mr. Town Manager?
We're going to go back one item. We've got the Lands and Conservation Commission here.
I didn't want to hear from John anyhow. Okay, let's go back one item. The next item is to consider an act on adopting standards for the development of, 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 and mountain trails on the town-owned properties and town-owned easements as recommended by the Lands and Conservation Commission.
John Gensenius, our Titan of Trails, is here tonight. He has done a phenomenal job on putting this document together. He and I have spoken several times, as well as Mike Schwint, our Chair of the LCC. They continue to do a lot of work for our community. John, if you wouldn't mind coming up and just kind of giving an overview of that. I don't know if it was John or Mike, so I apologize if it was Mike, but I thought it was John. And I think John will cover a lot of ground here in a very short period of time and I think you'd be somewhat impressed.
Okay, John Gensenius, recreational trails Chair and 44 Laurel Lane. As Bill said, I just want to give a quick overview of the proposed trail standards for the town. Just very quickly, these apply to town-owned properties and easements, except where any previous agreements for the management of trails of town-owned properties, they'll be honored. And that in particular would apply to Knights Pond where there's a joint standing committee. All trail maintenance and construction must be done in conjunction with the recreational trail subcommittee and/or the lands or conservation commission. One of the problems we have is people who are more than willing to help out and without following any standards may find routes around muddy areas and expand the trails or start throwing boards down. And we think that we should have some standards here. And for any of the town-owned properties which are covered by easements, any maintenance or construction has to be coordinated with the holder of the easement. And in the case of many of our properties, that would be the Shevegan Cumberland Land So we've tried to categorize the trails in the town into various categories. Urban trails being sidewalks and paved pathways, those are maintained by public works. What I've called semi-rural trails, which are high-use trails that have been hardened with gravel. And again, those are maintained mainly by public works with some assistance from volunteers, things like the town forest, Twin Brook. And then we get to the rural trails, which are maintained mainly by volunteers with assistance from public works when needed, things like Rhine's Forest and Greeley Woods. And then snowmobile trails generally, which are in the rural areas, some of them may be in the semi-rural trails, maintained by volunteers, some of which from the snowmobile club, and with assistance from public works as needed. And then we have handicap accessible trails over at Twin Brook. So those are basically the categories of trails that we've looked at in the town. Lots of different uses. I don't want to go through all of those, but I do want to point out that the trails have increased dramatically, or trail use has increased dramatically this spring with the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased trail use, combined with the very wet weather we had this past spring, has put a strain on the trail surfaces and has increased the need for trail maintenance. So, these are basically the standards that we're looking at. And I'll run through this. The trail width, or the tread width is really the walking area of the trail. The trail width gives you a little bit elbow room as you go by. Trail height, of course, the height of the trail, the clearance. And finally, the tread surface, which, for example, for the urban trails, that coincides with the sidewalks that exist right now. We tried to make these conform to the existing standards being used. Basically, the same is true of the semi-rural trails, basically conforming to the standards that are in the town forest and also Twin Brook. As for the rural trails, we're looking at a tread width of a foot and a half to three feet. This is, we want them to continue to be trails. We don't want them to be wide pathways. The biggest problem is keeping them narrow because they tend to get a little muddy and they're ever-expanding. And that's one of the issues that, that we do have. As far as the overall width, three to five feet, it gives room for people to pass by. And then the snowmobile trails, these are basically what we've worked with on the snowmobile club on and the accessible trails. And I should point out that these recommendations do not apply for heavy snow loads when the branches may be weighed down. You're still going to have to duck under the hemlocks unless you want to have a neck full of snow. So as far as one of the maintenance things that we would do, would be hardening the trails in some of the soft areas to prevent the ever-expanding widening or spider webbing of the paths. This is an example, and most of these examples are from Greeley Woods. Little bit of sand-gravel mix here. And this was put on a little later in the, in May when things had started to dry out. But as you can see, it was worn well into here and actually worn on the other side too. So it had already started to get quite wide. Right now, people are generally just using this path. And that's what we'd like to see. As far as structures on the trails, we're looking at both bridges and walkways. Bridges primarily cross for crossing streams. Width as least as wide as the trail width, but not less than four feet. And any bridges over four feet in height should have a railing of at least 42 inches in height. And if a bridge doesn't have a railing, it should have some sort of a curb on both sides of the tread. As far as walkways, primarily constructed in very soft and wetland areas, the width should be at least as wide as the recommended tread width, but no less than two feet. And walkways generally are only about a foot above the ground, just to get you above the wet area. On snowmobile trails, whatever we build has to conform to the snowmobile standards. So as an example, that's a, a bridge that was built last summer in Greeley Woods. It's four feet wide and you can see it has a little curb on the side and has worked well. It actually stayed fairly well during the flood last fall, so that was good. And the next example, I just want to show what happens to trails over time. This is one particular area in Greeley Woods. This was a year ago in a very dry August. And you can see that the bikes had already cut into it a little bit. Not too bad, but given that it was so dry, it's probably a sign that this is going to be an area that we're going to have to do some work on, which is one of the reasons I took a picture of it. By May, it looked like that. And I will put it, point out that that particular area was pretty much like a thick soup. And at that point, people were walking way around this area, very, very wide. So what we did is we put a walkway across it. That's a two feet wide and about 34 feet long. And people have been generally using that since, a little later, you can see another picture with some of the growth starting to come up. This area, of course, had been trampled, but still starting to get some growth, that area. You say it was slowed a little bit. And so it was starting to dry out and then the rains in Lake June came and very glad to have the walkway there as it was underwater. So that's a quick look at what we're looking at as far as walkways. As far as signage, we have various signs, trail markers that we put. That's just an example of a trail marker. We have roadside trail signs that we put up wherever we can, along with the CT Cumberland Trail sign. And we also have signs indicating where we, when you are leaving Cumberland Town property, especially in areas where we have more permission to have marked trails through private property. So that's a, really a, just a quick look at where, where we are. We are planning to do quite a bit of maintenance this fall to try and harden up some of the trails and some walkways. And we have a limited amount of time because as we all know, in four months, we'll be back to winter. So... four months, we'll be back to winter. So anyhow, we're asking the Town Council to adopt the standards that we're proposing.
Thank you, John. Do we have any other comments? Penny?
Hi, I'm Penny Asherman, President of the Board of Shevegan Cumberland Land Trust. Can you hear me okay? Something quiet. Okay. So I just wanted to let you know that we've been working with John on the trail standards. The Land Trust has reviewed them, approved them, and we look forward to working with the Conservation Commission on keeping up the trails. We have about 50 volunteers who regularly want to come out and work on trails. So we're looking forward to coordinating on some of the work to be done this fall. So just wanted to say that we support the effort, and we think some consistent language is going to be good to have across the properties. And we just caution that we don't want to widen too many trails because that invites other problems. So I think it's nice that we have the standards applying to different areas of town so that there's a variety of options for people to choose from. And I just wanted to thank John for all of his hard work.
Penny, one question. Over at Knights Pond, there was concern about the width of the trail. Has that been resolved?
I don't believe so. Nope. I think we had a request from the North Yarmouth Rescue to widen all the trails so that he could get a rescue machine through. And I think there was not a lot of support for that idea. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Penny. Mike, you have anything? I would bring it back to the Council for any comments. George?
The Joint Standing Committee, that proposal was brought in front of the Joint Standing Committee, and as you know, a couple of us Cumberland and a couple of North Yarmouth. And I didn't see anybody thrilled with the idea of widening. And we talked about reasons for widening and reasonings for making sure that it wasn't overdone. And the consensus was that this proposal was definitely a little bit, potentially at least, overdone. So we didn't recommend it.
Good. Any other comments? Shirley?
This was George's question, really, because this came to me when I was still Chair. But, and I may be misinterpreting the concern, but where is the onus on this, these standards if for some reason, we can't afford to keep the trails up to these standards as a town?
Mr. Manager, you want to answer that?
Sure. These are, these are standards that become part of our operating documents, and those are enforced by the Council. Those are Council policies and Council directives. So when you can't afford to fund them, we can't afford to do them. So that's...
I just wanted to make that clear. So I wanted a public acknowledgement of that.
The one, the one thing we do have to be careful about, to George's point, on the Joint Standing Committee, that is a group that you and the Select Board of North Yarmouth have agreed to have members from both towns on that Joint Standing Committee. That committee still would have to have a presentation from the LCC, and I don't know why they wouldn't want to adopt those similar standards, but we can't force that upon them. We'd have to bring that to them and say, here are the, here are the standards we'd like to adopt for these trails. I think they've done a great job including those, but I just want to just give you some caution that those would apply to every town of Cumberland-owned piece of property, except for Knights Pond Preserve, which we'd have to go back to a future Joint Standing Committee to have those adopted.
I think this, I'm sorry. I think this is an amazing body of work.
It sure is.
It's just incredible. And thank you, all of you, for your, your work on this.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion? Ron?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt standards to develop and maintain trails on town-owned properties and town-owned easements as recommended by the Lands and Conservation Commission.
Allison has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. The next item is 20-054, to hear a report from the Town Manager, reference discontinuance of a portion of Turkey Lane from Range Road to the Snowmobile Bridge. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an interesting dilemma that we have on Turkey Lane. Turkey Lane is a road that presently is owned by the Town of Cumberland that begins at Range Road and essentially ends at Route 9. And there's a developed portion, which is the section that comes off of Route 9. And those of you who know Mrs. Watson, she lives right here, the road kind of essentially ends right in front of her house. The right-of-way continues up to a snowmobile bridge. This is the bridge the Snowmobile Club put in, I think it was maybe 10 or 12 years ago, with our assistance. And then the right-of-way actually continues at 60 feet wide all the way to Range Road. Range Road has not been maintained or really any significant work done to it by the Town of Cumberland in probably over 40 years. Presently, there are no homes that are on Turkey Lane on this side of Turkey Lane, on the Range Road end. The Galladets live about where my red arrow is shown. There's, they own this property over here as well. It's a large undeveloped field at this point. And this would be a 20-foot public easement that we would retain if we discontinued Turkey Lane. Now, let's talk about why discontinue it at all. Well, many years ago, several of you remember what happened on Harris Road. Harris Road was a road that was built of probably about half of what it is today. There were residents that built additional homes beyond the developed area and came to the Council and said, hey, we want you to build this road to standard and get it back up to speed. They sued the town and were successful, and the town spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in upgrading Harris Road to a town-standard road. Presently, we have a landowner that is very willing to work with us and doesn't require us to upgrade the road. What we are doing is preserving a public easement over it so that the public still could walk from Range Road all the way to Route 9, could still snowmobile, and could still basically take non-motorized equipments, accepting snowmobiles, all the way over to the other side. I think it's something worth considering for the Council. It is a very specific legal process. Tonight, I have to introduce the item to you to get your input to see if you want to move forward with this. If you choose to do so, you can set a public hearing for August 24th. August 24th, we would, we'd send out notice to the butters in the area. You would hold a public hearing, and you could not vote on it that night. You would still have to leave that open until September 10th, and that's when you could take formal action that evening. So it's a very specific process that we're working with Natalie Burns, the Town Attorney, through. She has laid it out. You have that documentation in your packet. But this is essentially what it is. I think it's about 1,800 feet from Range Road to the bridge. We would go, you could see here, it's about 20 feet wide. It's specifically laid out so that the utility poles will have little bump outs. So in the future, you know, the utility companies don't have to go and get easements from budding landowners or anything. We would keep those as part of the easement. I think it works to everybody's interest. We still maintain a public easement in it, and the, we're not required to invest any type of public funds that we don't want to in this public easement at all. So that's where it lands. It's really up to you if you'd like to continue, at least in the process, to hear from other owners of land in the area. But again, they are the budding landowners on both sides. But we would identify everybody around here just to get some input, because people do fish down there. People do use it as a snowmobile trail. People still walk down there, walk through there. So it's not totally abandoned, but it doesn't feel like, like you belong there, really. It feels more like a, kind of an abandoned road. Essentially, that's what it is.
Bill, how far is the residence from the, if it turns into a 20-foot right-of-way, how far is the residence from the right-of-way?
Six feet.
There, oh, there's, there's a home right here at the, at the intersection. That's a little bit further than that, that, that has access off of Range Road. They do have some frontage along here. And then the, the Galladets' home is back further, but it's, it's gotta be a lot more than six feet. It's, there used to be a home in this area that they basically took down, an old farmhouse.
Yeah, that's right. That's how it's, yeah.
That was pretty close, Bob. You're right. It probably was six feet from the right-of-way.
But Galladets is how far.
Yes.
I'm just thinking, I wouldn't want snowmobiles zipping back and forth when I own the property, and I...
Oh, they are amenable to allowing snowmobiles. There's not a lot that go through there, and it's basically been maintained by the club. And remember, the club basically put this bridge in as well.
Yeah, I remember. I know the property.
Bob?
I'm, I'm against this, Bill. And I'll tell you why. It sets, it sets a precedence. The next thing you want to see is, and I fault the town a little bit for not maintaining this. And I understand when Halver Merrill's lived there, you know, you wanted to give him some privacy.
Did I get his right name right?
Yes, you did.
His home was, was six feet from the road there, and so it was allowed to become overgrown. But we should have, we should have maintained that and kept it cut and, because it's, it's a beautiful pool down there. Water, the fishing is, can be good. It's, it's always been a nice spot. And anyways, I traveled Turkey Lane when I was a boy, and I drove across it when I got a license and continued across it. The minute we, we set the precedent of allowing this to happen, you know, Range Way extension, Greeley Road extension, Pleasant Valley Road up over the top there, so I'm very hesitant to, to give up any rights of public way. And I think that a, an easement across there for the public is, is not the same as maintaining ownership.
Any public comment? No?
Okay.
Any other comments from the Council?
Just a question for the Manager. Discontinuance of it, Bill, at what point, where would the discontinuance begin, I guess, would be my question? I mean, I know the Town Plaza Watson's now, just to the end of her driveway, and then they back around and leave. So would it start there, or would it start at the bridge?
It would start on the Range Road side of the bridge.
Okay.
So everything up to the bridge from the Main Street side, Route 9 side, would still maintain, would be maintained as a...
So the only discontinuance would be from Range Road to the bridge?
Correct. With a public easement preserved in the town. So if the, if the land ever got developed and somebody wanted to put a house in there, they would have to come to you for a license to put a house in there because you would own the easement. You have typically done that, but the cost of that driveway or whatever improvement would be borne by the, the new homeowner.
And I'm, I'm a little bit in Bob's camp because I hunt down in there, and I've shot deer down in there. And I can drive my vehicle down to the bridge now. Probably shouldn't, but I know somebody that'd come pull me out. But, so, I mean, and thanks to everybody that owns the land around it, they still allow people to travel down through there. Like you said, Bob, Halver Merrill's house literally was four feet from the road. I mean, you could, you kind of felt embarrassed when you walked by because you were, felt like you were intruding on his property. But, but that house is gone now. So, I mean, I have no problem listening to this, but I'm a little bit leery of giving up the rights.
It would be one thing if you were talking about from Main Street to Range Road, but it's, it's a short piece. And the, the public access there is, is too much to give up. I mean, it would be a fantastic place for a park, though that field up in there, it's, it's just a beautiful spot. You know, I recognize that we're, we're still maintaining public access, but it's, it's, it's different.
Do we so where everyone's going fishing? Is that private property, or is that public property that we are being allowed to? It's like the old Knights Pond where, no trespassing, but you may skate.
No, it's, it's mostly private property on both sides. Currently, you own a 60-foot right-of-way, which basically goes all the way to Route 9. So you own a 60-foot swath of land all the way through there. So you can walk to the bridge, you can walk, you can fish at the bridge, you can, you know, do all that. But you don't own either side of it. And it would be difficult, it would be difficult today. A lot of it has grown up. The landowner there has basically kind of mowed it a few times with a bushog to kind of keep the trees from growing all up through the right-of-way. Or else it'd be, it'd be all treed and forested by now. You wouldn't even know where it is.
There was a load of gravel dumped in there to prevent people from driving down through there.
Especially in the wintertime, because in the wintertime, Halver Merrill, Merrill, until the, until the 60s, used to drive the ambulance across that bridge. And that was not much of a bridge, even in the 60s. So over time, it had collapsed with the floods and everything. And the, the structure, the superstructure was still in place, and that's why the Snowmobile Club came to you and said, hey, can we get your help? Now, you cannot get there from the Watson's side of the, of, of this street, of Turkey Lane. That is pretty well washed out, and it's, we had to build a road almost to get to the bridge the last time we did it. It would be very, very difficult to do much there.
It's all vegetated.
Yeah, and it's, it's kind of a mess. The other side is, you can easily get to the bridge. So...
Why aren't all the butters notified?
We will in the next notice. We, but, we, we were told to, by our attorney, to notify the direct butters about this meeting tonight.
Okay, well, my friend Beth lives on the corner of Range Road in front of the Galladets'.
Oh, in that house?
Yeah. And she, she actually abuts on the corner. She's that corner on Range Way and...
She will get a packet of, we just don't have her in the system. We had somebody else in the system right now. So, yeah, anybody that abuts and people beyond that will get a packet of information for the 24th, if you choose to hold it.
Any other comments, questions by the Council? Do we have a motion?
Move the table. Second.
We got a motion to move the table. All in favor? That's four. All in favor? Oh, the motion, wait a minute, wait a minute.
So move the table.
Move the table, okay.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, the next item is 20-055, to accept a bequest of $50,000 for a scholarship fund to be set up for a senior, for a Greeley senior. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet tonight, you have information related to this scholarship. The family has proposed setting up a scholarship for a Greeley senior. And what we typically do with these type of scholarships is to invest the principal amount, and the interest on that principal is, is basically dedicated to the scholarship. This would be called the David Scully Memorial Scholarship Fund. Typically, would it draw a little over 2% interest annually? It's kind of what we're, our investment accounts are in right now. By law, we are required to be investing in very specific types of investments, which are very low-risk and therefore yield not a lot of interest. We are estimating somewhere a little over 2% would be the return. So somewhere about $1,000 a year that would be available for this scholarship. What I will also share with you, I've talked to the Chair about this, apologize for the surprise, but it was in your packet. We really should have somebody on that scholarship committee and... We really should have somebody on that scholarship committee, and since Shirley's retired and has nothing to do, I'm just sorry, sorry. I reached out to her and said, what, what a, what a great way to basically use her talents, especially with all the kids coming through the system. Shirley has been a very strong advocate, as has her family, in the scholarships given at Greeley, and it would be nice to have somebody directly on that scholarship committee that could report back to the council about what was coming up and could make sure the Cumberland-only scholarships went to Cumberland-only students, because in the past, we've had those scholarships go to other students, which were a honest mistake, but it happens. So, I think this kind of closes the loop for us, and I, I hope you will, I hope you will support that.
Bill, this would be...
Questions, comments?
Set up similar to the Kimball Scholarship, which is another one the town...
Manages.
Manages and maintains.
Correct.
Which, by not having a Cumberland representative on the scholarship committee, twice went to someone from North Yarmouth, and it's supposed to go to a Greeley graduate.
For, for many years, Terry Snow was part of, of this committee until he passed away, so I, I think the timing is good. Terry did a great job for us on this, often reached out to me and the finance director to tell what was happening, but this would be a good first step.
Other questions or comments?
Do you like a motion?
George, I'd like a motion. Thank you.
I'll move to, I move to accept a bequest of fifty thousand dollars for a scholarship fund to be set up for Greeley Senior and to appoint Shirley Story King to the Greeley Scholarship Committee.
Do we have a second? Allison, second. All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Thank you. Next item is to set a public hearing date of August 24th to consider an act on a zone change request for three point three five acre parcel located in the Greeley Center, Greeley Center Commercial VCC Zone to the Village Medium Density VMDR as zone, as recommended by the planning board.
Mr. Chair, this hasn't happened yet. It will happen next week, but we wanted to basically get it on your agenda. I don't know what the recommendation of the planning board will be, but they will be giving you a recommendation, and if, if it isn't ready or ripe for consideration, you could table it at your twenty, the meeting on the 24th.
Do we have a motion for table?
No, this is to set a public hearing.
To set a public hearing.
And that is, if it's not ready on the 24th, you could table it that evening.
Do you have a motion?
I have one. I move to set a public hearing date of August 24th to consider an act on a zone change request for a three point three five acre parcel located in the Village Center Commercial VCC Zone to the Village Medium Density residential VMDR Zone, as recommended by the planning board.
Do we, Ron, second? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Next item is to set a public hearing date of August 24th to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 229, Site Plan Review, Section 10, Approval Standards and Criteria, subsection H, Exterior Lighting of the Cumberland Code, as recommended by the planning board. Mr. Town Manager?
Same as the last item. The planning board will be hearing this a week from tomorrow night and giving you a recommendation, so if it is not ready on the 24th, you could table it that evening, but tonight is just to set the public hearing, just to give people notice that it's on your radar.
Any comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Shirley?
I move to set a public hearing date of August 24th to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 229, Site Plan Review, Section 10, Approval Standards and Criteria, subsection H, Exterior Lighting of the Cumberland Code, as recommended by the planning board.
Do you have a second? Allison, second? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. New business, the ordinance committee will not meet. Is that, is that true?
They'll meet on the 19th.
The 19th. Instead of the 12th. Finance Committee met earlier today, and will meet again on August 24th at 5:30. And the Town Council FOIA, which is Freedom of Information Act, training with, with the town attorney and on August 24th at 6:00 PM. Shirley, new business?
I have no new business tonight.
No new, new business?
No, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Bob?
I have a couple of things. The one I spoke with the town manager about, and the latest town crier, I, I noticed an item by the, by the school, that they were soliciting offers of land for a new school. And anyways, it, it kind of raises the hackles on my back a little bit. I think there should be a conversation with the school about, I know, school being located in the town of Cumberland with the town council. So, I, I think that the cat might be a little bit before the horse. So, I will ask that the chairman and the town manager have a discussion about that.
We will.
Okay.
You got it.
My other item that I have this evening is a letter that was sent to us by the town manager. I guess I gotta see if I can find it. Anyways, it was a, a, at some level, it was a gauntlet thrown down for action by the, by the town council, and there was a little bit of discussion by members of the, the board, and I think that it's appropriate that we ask the Chamber of Commerce Director to come in here for the next meeting and, and kind of explain to us what his insight was and why he was, wanted us to agree to sign on with him. And the other thing that I'd like to see done is, there was a number of businesses, and I believe that the, the CEO of LL Bean lives in this community, and I would like to see him come in here and, and kind of give us some insight as to why businesses are, are in favor of this also. I think that it might be something that the council can thoughtfully take a look at, and we may or may not adopt anything, but I think it's important that we listen to what these individuals have to say. So, again, I would ask that the chairman and the town manager put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
That's a great idea.
We will. Okay, thank you. Good idea. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Allison?
I'm good. Bob and I are aligned on that one, so, on that last item, so, so, yeah.
George?
Nothing for me tonight.
Ron?
A week from tomorrow night, the planning board will be meeting here in reference to the rezoning of the Board Barn property, and I think it's very important to some of the abutters that they know that this is taking place. Right now, that is zoned commercial, so you could put a commercial business along the old gray road if there was wanted today. The property owner wants to change it, the zoning, to allow residential homes to be built in there, so if you're on a butter, or if you live in West Cumberland and you have some concerns, it's very important that you come to the meeting next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, and state your case, because we're gonna vote on it, or the, the planning board is gonna make a recommendation to us, and we're gonna vote on it. So, if you have some input, it's very important that you show up, and there will be seating here, Ruth, Mr. Manager, I'm sure. I'm sure we don't want to fill the place with people, but I mean, there will be room for public comment.
Yes, I, I, that's a great point. I, I think what'll happen is that if we have an overflow crowd, we'll ask folks to wait to testify. We do have the six-foot spacing all the way out the hallway, all the way to, all the way to Twin Brook, so we're ready to go. So, as big of a crowd, we can handle it, ready for the election. So, I think, I think we'll be okay. That, that's our backup plan right now, is just to ask folks that they wait for the agenda item to come up, and to, once they testify, to allow somebody else to come up to the microphone.
I, I guess the reason I brought this up is I don't want people to be afraid to come to Town Hall. I mean, I want them to know that it's safe to come, and if you have a legitimate concern, please show up. I mean, that's gonna reflect on how we make our decisions, so, then that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, so...
So, Ron, you're expecting a big crowd?
Not a big crowd, but I think there'll be a handful of people. I mean, I'm expecting six to eight people that will...
Oh, good.
Some of butters that live on the road that have some genuine concern, because that's a gravel-based road, and I don't think they want a lot of traffic, but yet, commercial could attract more traffic than residential, so, I mean, it's, I've stated this before, pick your poison, I guess.
Yep.
Hopefully, people will show up. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ron. My input is for new business, is the food pantry had over, over sixty families again this past Friday. A big, big shout-out to both Hanaford and Yarmouth at Hanaford, and Good Shepherd for their support, and a, and I definitely want to thank the, the volunteers that we have, and they're very faithful, that they are supporting our efforts, and we could not do it without them. My hats off to the ordinance committee. They continue to do some very, very good work, and I'm very, very impressed by the ordinance committee, which is comprised of Shirley, George, and Mike. Good presentations were made by both Carla Nixon and Bill Longley at the recent meeting that we had for the, the, what am I ever thinking of here?
The ordinance committee.
For the ordinance committee. And I also would like to thank the folks that helped out with durable metal equipment, and the, I have a, now I have a ninety-three-year-old mother-in-law that is staying in our house, and it, that equipment was very, very useful. So, that's it, and thank you for that, and I have a motion. Ron?
I have one more comment, too. I have my twenty dollars for the food pantry, and I'm just putting this out there, because Council Stiles isn't here anymore. The Cumberland Fair has been canceled for this year, but they still are planning on having some type of an auction for the 4-H kids that have raised their beef and pork and all of that. So, I don't want people to think that just because the fair's not going on, that this auction's not gonna go on, because it is. They're actually gonna have a special day, and it'll be announced when it's gonna be for these kids that have raised these animals, that they can cash in on their crops. So, I just want everybody to know that it's still a worthy cause, and please donate, so, that's it.
I have my twenty-two, twenty dollars as well, as soon as I can get them into my pocket. It's a tight pocket. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Shirley?
Second.
Ron? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Thank you. Good night, everybody.